The public will have the opportunity to address city council during meeting open to the public, just like any other meeting. If you do want to announce yourself, speak, please, everyone, this goes for city council, too, you need to unmute yourself to be heard. If you don't unmute yourself, we won't know you're speaking. And then city council, we're going to take all votes tonight by roll call. And I thank the clerk for helping us get through that. All right. So we can jump into the agenda. First of all, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda tonight?
Your honor, you might want to consider a roll call first and then.
All right, that's fine, yeah, clerk, will you please take role?
Councilman Bliss?
I'm here.
Councilwoman Clark?
Here.
Councilman Corbett?
Here.
Mayor Portem Grabstein?
I'm here.
Councilor Rorback?
Here.
Councilman Saltus?
Here.
Mayor Harwell?
Yes, I'm here. Thank you, are there any, we have a quorum, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda tonight? Okay, hearing none, we can continue on. We don't have any presentations tonight. However, we do have several public hearings. The first public hearing is agenda item A1, it's special approval 2001 for major oil and detailing at the address of 27795 John R Road, an auto dealership in a B3 district. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
Yes, special approval is required to allow the used car dealership in a B3 general business district. The applicant is proposing a used car dealership with a continuation of a lot auto repair facility located at 27795 John R Road. This property currently operates a light auto repair facility that specializes in oil changes. The site has been B3 general business zoned on three sides of the north, south, and east. To the west is an R3 single-family residential zoning district. There is a screen wall already in place on the west side of the property between the commercial and residential uses. The applicant is proposing they will display up to six cars for sale on the site. The parking provided onsite meets the minimum number of spaces required and allows for adequate parking of proposed vehicles for sale. The hours of operation would be Monday through Saturday, eight to six, and Sunday nine to four. The site plan review committee has reviewed the application and all reviewed comments have been addressed. Should city council approve this request, the following conditions are recommended from the site plan review committee. No overnight outdoor storage of vehicles and disrepair vehicles awaiting repair, auto parts, or other materials. Vehicles for sale shall only be located in the spaces indicated on the approved site plan, and all vehicles shall be parked on the paved area approved by the city engineer to provide a permanent durable and dustless service and shall be created and drained as to dispose of all surface water accumulated within the area. Please be advised that in August of 2009, there was a request for special use at the same property for an auto dealership, including the display of 10 cars with an expanded parking lot. At this time, council unanimously denied the special request. The request being made tonight is a special use for an auto dealership to displace six vehicles instead of 10 and does not require an expanded parking lot. Under the state auto dealer license guidelines, an applicant must first receive special use if necessary from the local municipality before applying for a state vehicle license. In the past, we have not approved or denied special use based on state license guidelines. We have instead granted special use approval and referred to the state to grant license if the applicant meets their requirements. If council is considering approval tonight, the special use should be contingent upon the recommendations from the site plan review committee and the applicant receiving the appropriate auto dealers license to the state of Michigan. If council is considering denying this request, the denial should be based upon specific criteria listed in the standards 10.201.4 and 10.805 of the zoning ordinance.
All right, before we hear from city council, we're going to begin with a public hearing on this specific issue. So I'll open the public hearing. Is anyone from the public like to address the specific issue of special approval 2001 auto dealership in a B3 district? This is the public hearing for special approval 2001. I'm going to read something in the record. The city received communication from a resident who lives on Brush. That's just one street west of John R. And the message reads as follows. Okay. The property requested the same zoning change eight to 10 years ago and was denied by council then. At the same meeting, a second property south of this one, a landscape property, asked the same thing, to sell used cars. This request was also denied. And if you allow 27795 to sell cars, the old landscape property may also request the same in the future. We have five used auto sale businesses on John R at 11 Mile and South, and one on West 11 Mile. This seems to be enough for the south end, the DDA area. Please also note that north of this property, there are two auto repairs and one just south of 27795, which at times have many vehicles parked outside waiting for repair. I also want to commend the business at 27795 John R is very well kept up. And we think that cluttering up with used autos would not enhance the property. Hopefully, the council denies this request as it did the last time. Thank you. And that's signed by the gentleman, his first name is George, and he signs for the surrounding neighbors. And also, a postscript note, Old Landscape is now a car care auto center. So I read that into the public hearing. Would anyone else from the public like to speak during this special approval 2001? Unmute yourself, please. Okay, I'll close this. Oh, yeah, who's asked to be recognized? Yeah, I can hear someone, can you state your name, please?
Questions? And can you hear me okay?
No, sir, it's very difficult to hear you. It's a very weak signal, but you can continue.
All right. On the applicant, I just wanted to let you know that I'm on behalf. Simply put.
Oh, Doug, is Doug, Doug, it's Doug. Doug, we couldn't hear you, and I think we may have lost you.
We've lost him from the meeting.
Okay, Doug is an architect based in Madison Heights, and I'm curious if maybe he has an interest in this property. Let's wait a minute to see if Doug can get back.
He has returned.
Mr. Mayor, this is. Oh, there he is. Doug's the applicant.
Doug, the floor is still yours.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to reinforce the fact that this is an internet, this is more of an internet business and not a traditional used car. What he'll do is sell cars basically online and have them inspected and deliver them from that location. He's not asking for any signage or any really acknowledgement of being used car. Most of his contacts will occur over the internet, just that. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Doug. Would anyone else from the public like to address this special approval? The public hearing's still open. All right, I'll close the public hearing on this special approval. What's the wish of city council on this matter? All right, we can continue. There's no action by council tonight. The next item on the agenda is another public hearing. And that's agenda item A2, it's special approval 2002. It is Calibet Engineering at 25005 Dequinda Road and 1811 East 10 Mile Road. It's a gasoline service station in the B1 district. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
Yes, special approval is required to allow a gasoline service station in the B1 district. The application is proposing a gasoline station with a drive-through restaurant and retail store in a new commercial building. The property is currently vacant. The site is zoned M1 lot industrial zoning district on two sides to the north and the west. To the northwest is an HM Mobile Home Zoning District. To the east is Warren and to the south is Hazel Park. The parking provided onsite meets the minimum number of spaces required and allows the adequate stacking of vehicles for the proposed drive-through restaurant. Landscaping along Dequinda Road has been modified to allow shorter trees due to the new DTE overhead voltage lines. Hours of operation would be 24 hours a day, seven days a week. The site plan review committee has reviewed the plan and all review comments have been addressed. Should city council approve this request, the following conditions are recommended. No exterior storage of vehicles awaiting service and no bump and paint repair work permitted.
Okay, before we hear from the city council, we'll open a public hearing on this item. All right, the public hearing is now open for special approval 2002, a gasoline service station in a B1 district. Would anyone from the public like to address this issue? Gasoline service station in a B1 district? Last call to address special approval 2002 gasoline service station in B1 district?
Hi, Mr. Mayor, this is.
Oh, yes, sir.
This is ID Calibet, ID Calibet of Calibet Engineering, the applicant.
Welcome to the meeting, the floor is yours.
Thank you, sir. So I was going to give a little bit of time to see if anybody from the general public would like to address anything. The applicant has stated that he's seeking special use approval for the gas station at the B1 zoning district. All other requirements of the zoning district have been met. Be that, as the clerk mentioned, that the site plan review committee has reviewed it in all comments and have been addressed. So really, just here to answer any questions that you guys may have and hopefully request a favorable motion for approval.
All right, still the public hearing, I thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to, anyone from the public like to address special approval 2002, the gasoline station in a B1 district? All right, last call, special approval 2002. The public hearing is closed. What's the wish of city council on this matter?
Your honor.
Mr. Bliss, please.
I move that we grant special approval request 20-02.
Thank you, is there support?
Support.
Can you add the, to include the recommendations from the set plan review committee?
So added, so added.
Mr. Bliss, Mrs. Clark, do you agree?
Yes.
Okay, motion was made to adopt the recommendation by staff. Is there any discussion from city council? All right, hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. If you support the motion, your answer is yes, or I. If you oppose the motion, the answer is no. Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilman Bliss?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Grabstein?
Yes.
Councilor Rorback?
Yes.
Councilman Saltus?
No.
Mayor Harwell?
I vote yes, the motion carries. We can continue on the agenda. The next item for consideration is agenda item A3, it's special approval 2003 regarding Madison Center owner LLC at 29345 John R Road, its outdoor seating with alcohol beverage service in the B2 district. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
Yes, special approval is required to allow outdoor seating at restaurants that serve alcoholic beverages in the B2 district. The applicant is proposing a new restaurant building with outdoor seating along the east side of the building facing John R at 29345 John R Road. That's an outlot of the Madison Center Plaza where BJ's currently is. Hours of operation will serve seven days a week from 7:00 AM to 2:30 PM. The site plan review committee has reviewed the plan and all review comments have been addressed. Should city council approve this request, the following conditions are recommended. The outdoor seating area is limited to the east side of the building as shown in the approved site plan. The outdoor alcoholic beverage service is limited to an area designated for outdoor seating in the approved site plan. No outdoor speakers, no flashing lights, no outdoor entertainment, and outdoor seating hours are limited to hours of operation, which are Monday through Sunday, 7:00 AM in the morning to 2:30 PM.
Thank you, did you say 2:30 PM or AM?
2:30 PM, like the middle of the day. It's a brunch, lunch, breakfast type place, so it would be right after lunch, the place would be closed.
Okay, thank you. All right, this is another public hearing, so I'll open up another public hearing. This is the public hearing for special approval 2003, outdoor seating with alcohol beverage service in a B2 district. Is anyone from the public here to speak on the special approval 2003, outdoor seating with alcohol beverage service in a B2 district? All right, last call for the public hearing for special approval.
Mr. Mayor, this is Reed Cooksey with Stonefield Engineering and Design, representing the applicant here. Just wanted to introduce myself and answer any questions the board may have regarding this agenda item.
Thank you for speaking up. Would you like to make any comments, or you're just open for questions?
Just as Ms. Marsh said, we have all the approvals required by the city for this development within the outlot of the BJ's Shopping Center. We plan to comply with all the regulations for outdoor seating and that were put forward, and we don't plan on changing those. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else from the public like to speak during this public hearing? It's for special approval 2003. Okay, no one else is asked to be recognized during the public hearing. It's closed. What's the wish of council regarding this matter?
Your honor?
Yes, Mr. Bliss?
I move that we grant special approval request 2003 with the conditions that the safe plan review committee has come up with.
Thank you, is there support?
Mr. Mayor, support.
Thank you, Mr. Corbett. All right, it's been moved and seconded to grant special approval 2003 with the conditions set forth by the site plan review committee. Was there any discussion from council?
Your honor, just a quick question, if I may. On the, on the list of conditions, it has the, the no outdoor speakers. I know for a lot of restaurants, playing ambient music does help with the experience. I'm not sure if that, if that was requested by the applicant and then was included, or if the applicant wasn't considering it at all.
To answer that question, they did not request that. That is something that we've put standard on any of these outdoor seating requests. As far as I could tell, I looked back at the last several that had been approved. So it was, it was added in there.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
If I may, we don't, the applicant doesn't plan on having any sort of outdoor speaker system, any sort of music, no matter what volume.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion from city council?
Your honor?
Yes, please, Mr. Corbett.
Just a question, maybe to, to Mr. Hicks. The only thing that, it seems to be following the Breakfast Club model, for lack of a better I think that's the proper name. I'm looking at that 7:00 AM to 2:30 PM. Do we have a lot of businesses that are seriously doing outdoor seating between 7:00 and 10:00 in the morning?
I don't know how many businesses we currently have, and I'm sorry if I missed part of your question there, maybe the sound quality wasn't real great on this end, but.
Sorry about that, yeah.
That's okay. I, I don't know how many businesses we have, other than like, you know, the Breakfast Club that are doing something like that in town. This particular business, is this kind of something that they do? This is a chain, so those are their standard operating hours. I don't know if that answered your question.
Well, I'm not, and I just seriously don't imagine there's going to be necessarily a lot of alcohol. Yeah, there were a couple of jokes that occurred to me, I'm going to skip right over. But with limiting outdoor seating to 7:00 to 2:30, I don't think there's going to be hard drinking going on.
No, this is like brunch, basically.
Yeah.
It's typically like mimosa specials and those kind of things.
Okay. I'm not a big mimosa guy myself. All right, thank you, your honor.
Thank you, any other city council comments? Okay, again, we'll do a roll call vote. If you support the motion, your vote will be yes or I. If you oppose, your answer will be no. Will the clerk please take the roll call vote?
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Grabstein?
Yes.
Councilor Rorback?
Yes.
Councilman Saltus?
Yes.
Councilman Bliss?
Yes.
Mayor Harwell?
I vote yes, the motion carries. Next on the agenda is meeting open to the public. This is the opportunity for anyone who's listening or watching in to address city council on any subject. So meeting is now open to the public. If you'd like to speak, please unmute yourself and identify yourself by name. The meeting is open to the public.
Hello?
Yes, hi.
Hi. This is Colleen Porter at 30223 Longfellow. I just wanted to recognize and say thank you to all the people who are volunteering at the Madison Heights Emergency Pantry and also both the Madison School District and the Lampier School District for providing food for residents and families. It's been a huge help since now the stay-at-home order has been extended and whatnot, so I just wanted to say thank you to all those involved.
All right, thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to city council that the meeting is still open to the public on any subject? All right, last chance, meeting open to the public. Would anyone else like to bring up any, any issue, any subject? Okay, we'll continue on our agenda. The next, our communications, we have several tonight. The first agenda item is C1. It's from the city manager. It's the waiver of late fee for utility bill payments, water, sewer, and stormwater. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
Yes. Pursuant to the city manager's authority under the city charter and the code of ordinances, and due to the declared state and local emergency, I have authorized the waiving of penalties for utility bill payments, giving residents and businesses longer to pay in response to COVID-19 economic climate unless council objects. But the details are in your packet, but people would have an additional three months to pay their residential water bills, and they could make payments if they wanted throughout that period, or they could wait and pay it three months from whenever they would get their bill. So March would be due like June the 22nd. So unless council objects, that's what I have authorized.
Thank you, Mrs. Marsh. Do you need any city council action, or only objections?
Only if you object. So I'm good.
All right, I'll open the floor, any comments or any action from city council? All right. Thank you, Melissa. The next communication is from the city clerk. It's regarding the resignation of John Turchin from the crime commission. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
Yes, John Turchin has submitted his letter of resignation from the crime commission. Due to the reduction of the size of this board from the boards of commissions review process, the seat will be vacated but will also be eliminated.
Okay, what's the wish of city council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
I move that the council accept the resignation of John Turchin and issue the appropriate certificate of appreciation for service.
Thank you, is there support?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Rorback?
Support.
Okay, it was a, a motion was made, seconded to accept Mr. Turchin's resignation and issue the appropriate appreciation. Is there any discussion from city council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Just to give Mr. Turchin his appropriate place in the history of the community, him and I are permanently tied at the hip. We were the, he was a fellow that I tied in the election with many years ago. And luck of the draw, it'd be his face in the camera right now, but a good guy, he's served the community for many, many years. And so I'm sorry to see this resignation. Is he still on the PBD Review Committee, or is, did he leave that?
I believe he is. I'd have to look for sure, but I don't have it right in front of me.
Well, I'm glad to hear, maybe we haven't completely lost our ties to John, but anyway, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, other city council comments? All right, let's vote. Once again, the clerk will take a roll call vote. If you support the motion, your answer is yes or I. If you oppose, your answer is no. Clerk, please take the vote.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Grabstein?
Yes.
Councilor Rorback?
Yes.
Councilman Saltus?
I.
Councilman Bliss?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Mayor Harwell?
I vote yes, the motion carries. Continuing on the agenda. That brings us to reports. Agenda item D1 is from the DPS director. It's the 2020 Summer Maintenance Agreement with the Road Commission for Oakland County. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
Provided for council's consideration is the 2020 Summer Maintenance Agreement from the Road Commission of Oakland County for 14 Mile, 12 Mile, John R from 14 Mile to the Red Run County drain. Under this contract, the city provides street sweeping, weed and grass mowing, and litter pickup along the county roads. This contract includes a 7.9% increase in 2019 for a total of $12,072.95. This 2020 rate reflects the current bid prices solicited by RCOC. Staff and I recommend city council approve the contract and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign on behalf of the city.
Thank you, Mrs. Marsh. What's the wish of city council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move that the council approve the 2020 Summer Maintenance Agreement and authorize the clerk and the mayor to sign on behalf of the community.
Thank you, is there support?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mrs. Rorback?
Support.
Okay, thank you, it's been moved and seconded to adopt the agreement with the Road Commission for Oakland County and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign on behalf of the city. Is there any discussion from city council? All right, let's vote, we'll do roll call vote. If you support it, your answer is yes or I. If you oppose, the answer is no. Will the clerk please take the vote?
Mayor Portem Grabstein?
Yes.
Councilor Rorback?
Yes.
Councilman Saltus?
Yes.
Councilman Bliss?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Mayor Harwell?
I vote yes, the motion carries. Continuing on the agenda, it's item D2, it's a report from the police chief. It's for the, the net agreement and council resolution. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
The city of Madison Heights currently has a police officer assigned to the Oakland County Narcotics Enforcement Team, or NET. Oakland County has applied for a grant from the United States Office of National Drug Control Policy for funding of $117,000 to reimburse NET participating agencies for eligible to reimburse NET participating agencies for eligible law enforcement overtime cost. If Oakland County has awarded this grant, the county will reimburse the city up to four thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars for qualifying NET-related overtime as described in the agreement. For the city of Madison Heights to be reimbursed, the overtime wages earned for our officer assigned to the NET task force, Oakland County is requiring that the local governing board of the city approve a sub-recipient agreement by resolution and authorize the city manager and the city clerk to be sign on behalf of the city. The city's attorney's office has reviewed this sub-recipient agreement and the resolution, and they have approved both as drafted.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, what's the wish of city council?
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, Mrs. Rorback, please.
I move that, uh, we approve that NET hit a agreement with, uh, uh, I'm sorry. I recommend I move that we adopt resolution and authorize the city manager and the city clerk to sign the twenty twenty high-density drug trafficking area sub-recipient agreement between County of Oakland and the City of Madison Heights.
Yeah, great job. Um, is there support?
Your Honor.
Mr. Saltus?
I support the counselor.
Okay, thank you. Um, a motion was made, uh, very well stated and supported. Um, is there any discussion from city council? All right, we'll vote. Um, we'll do another roll call vote. Uh, if you support the motion, the answer is yes or aye. If you oppose, the answer is no. Will the clerk please take the vote on this matter?
Councilor Rorback?
Yes.
Councilman Saltus?
Yes.
Councilman Bliss?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Graffstein?
Yes.
Mayor Harwell?
I vote yes. The motion carries. Um, the next item on our agenda um, is item E one. It's from the CED director. It's, uh, to establish a public hearing for consideration of a brownfield plan for Cypress Partners located at the addresses three hundred twenty-one to seventy-one Dequinder Road. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
Yes. Cypress Partners has requested city council to consider a brownfield redevelopment financing request for reimbursement of eligible activities on the site located at three zero zero two one to three zero zero seven one Dequinder in the amount of one million seven hundred thirty-three thousand seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars for a nine-year period. The applicant will invest a minimum of twelve million dollars in private funds for the development of the site. On August the twelfth of twenty nineteen, city council approved a payment in lieu of taxes arrangement for this, this location and Cypress Partners to encourage development of a senior living opportunity at this Dequinder site. The length of this pilot was approved at sixteen to forty years depending on financing obtained. Under this pilot, the city would have received approximately one hundred and forty-five thousand dollars the first year and forty-six thousand dollars per year thereafter for the duration of the agreement. Under the brownfield, the city will receive four thousand one hundred and eighty-six dollars for nine years, and then approximately a hundred and ninety thousand dollars per year each year thereafter. The, this results in the brownfield being monetarily advantageous to not only the city, but also to the, the developer and all other taxing jurisdictions. When comparing the estimated forty-year timeframe of the brownfield, the city will benefit by four point four million dollars over the pilot and seventeen point seven million dollars for all taxing jurisdictions. This pilot agreement will be replaced by the proposed brownfield if it is approved. The development agreement has been drafted and states that the commitment to provide recourse to revoke the brownfield if the applicant fails to meet the performance standard. A copy of the brownfield plan is available for review in the Community and Economic Development Department at City Hall. Tonight, city council is being asked to schedule a public hearing at the regular city council meeting on April twenty-seventh of twenty twenty to consider this brownfield plan for three zero zero two one and three zero zero seven one Dequinder. And even though I didn't put the numbers in, over the sixteen-year timeframe, if the pilot was sixteen years, it is still advantageous to the city of five hundred thousand dollars and almost one point two million dollars for all taxing jurisdictions. And we also have Jeff Buck on the line. He is the, um, person, the representative from Cypress Partners. If the council has any questions of him either.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Marsh. Um, what's the wish of city council on this matter?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corbett?
I move, I move that the, uh, council establish, uh, April twenty-seventh as the date for public hearing to consider a brownfield plan for three zero zero two one, uh, three, three zero zero seven one Dequinder.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor?
Mr. Saltus?
Support, please.
Thank you. It's, um, it's been moved and seconded, um, to establish the public hearing. Um, is there any discussion from city council?
Mr. Mayor, I, I do have, uh, a number of questions, but really tonight's not the night. This is just to establish the public hearing, but, uh, if, uh, perhaps Mr. Buck and, uh, Ms. Marsh may be available to members of council later on in a couple of weeks. Uh, we can chat about this. But other than that, uh, just to set up the hearing, so. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. We will listen and respond to your questions in due time, I promise you. Any other comments from city council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Sherman?
Just a point of information for council. When we take up the brownfield redevelopment, uh, plan, uh, two weeks from now, if council were to approve the plan, uh, there would be an agenda item for council to repeal the pilot ordinance that it adopted in August and also rescind municipal services agreement. So it would all be handled the same night.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, we'll take the vote. Again, it'd be a roll call vote. Um, if you support this matter, your motion is yes or aye. If you oppose, the answer is no. Will the clerk please take the vote?
Councilman Saltus?
Yes.
Councilman Bliss?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Graffstein?
Yes.
Councilor Rorback?
Yes.
Mayor Harwell?
I vote yes. The motion carries. Uh, the next item for consideration, um, is a bid award or purchase. It's agenda item F one. It's the twenty twenty major and local sectional concrete repair program. Uh, Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
Yes. The continuing increase in the price of concrete materials and labor necessitated the bill, bidding of the upcoming non-R sectional concrete replacement program. On February twelfth of twenty twenty, eleven sealed bids were received in the city clerk's office by the deadline. Upon review, Sipperoni Contracting of Southfield, Michigan provided the lowest bid for the projects. Sipperoni Contracting has completed several other projects in the city of Madison Heights as well as other municipalities in recent years. This action would not commit city council to any of the fiscal year twenty twenty-one projects. Any twenty twenty projects would go through city council CIP and budget approval process in the normal course. Any twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one major and local sectional repair projects approved by the city council would then be constructed by Sipperoni Construction under this contract. Staff and I concur with the recommendation of our city engineer and recommend that city council award this bid for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one major street and local road sectional repair project to the lowest responsible bidder, Sipperoni Contracting of Southfield, Michigan, for a total project amount not to exceed one million eighty thousand one hundred and forty-five dollars.
Thank you, Mrs. Marsh. What's the wish of city council? Any motions?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
Sir, I move that the, uh, council approve the awarding of the bid. Uh, I'm sorry, I just lost it here. The, the, the Sipperoni. And I don't have the amount. What's the amount there?
One million eighty thousand one forty-five, not to exceed, but that would be subject to council's approval of the roads in the budget process.
Yeah, I would incorporate that into my motion.
Okay, thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Rorback?
Support.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Um, is there any discussion on this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mrs. Rorback?
Is this the same, um, company that, uh, worked on similar projects in the past? I see in the report it's completed several similar, similar projects. I just know that some folks have been unhappy with some of the road work that has been done in the city in the last several years. Is, do we know, is this the same business that did some of those projects that have been deemed a challenge for some of our residents?
They have done some road projects, but I'll defer to Corey Estes exactly which roads they've completed. Once he unmutes himself.
Sorry, um, Sipperoni's worked in, in Madison Heights in the past. They, um, in twenty seventeen, they worked on, uh, they did the NHPP project on thirteen mile from John R. to Dequinder, and then again, uh, last year on thirteen mile. There were some rideability issues that they had in seventeen, uh, that were resolved, um, last year, but, uh, didn't affect that project at all.
Other discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
I just, I just need, uh, clarification from Corey that you said there was rideability issues. What does that mean?
So if you, uh, in thirteen, they did the, the eastbound curb lane, um, from John R. to Dequinder, and as you ride along that, um, uh, that lane and the curb lane heading East Bone, you'll, you'll feel a bit of a, a waviness. It's not, um, a true consistent ride that you would expect from, uh, a brand-new concrete road. However, um, with that project, with the, the, the problems that they had back in seventeen was matching the existing joint line of the left lane. There's really, uh, not much that they can do to correct that situation back then, but I know it was a point of contention, um, um, by the CD director at that time.
Your Honor?
Yeah, please, go ahead.
Oh, Corey, what was that road? Can you specify the road again?
Yeah, it's thirteen mile uh, from, um, John R. to Dequinder, the eastbound lane, uh, curb lane. This is the, the, the lane in question. They also, they came back, uh, last year and did, um, portions of, um, uh, westbound from Dequinder to, uh, just past Hales, and then also some East Bone, East Bone, uh, left lane as well. And, uh, we didn't, we didn't, uh, have any major issues last year to speak of.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Did, is that, uh, is that the same company that did any, did they do any of the work within the neighborhoods? Um, I know that I've heard quite a few complaints about some of the road work that was done within the neighborhoods in our city. Um, you know, the squi- like, I don't know how, what it's called, but the way they cut out the big squares and replace that, a lot of those have quickly deteriorated. And I just want to know if this is the same company that did that work?
No, uh, no, that's, that's a joint rot issue. That was a, a concrete issue, uh, that goes back from ninety-five. That was about oh-five. Uh, is, uh, that was a, basically a mix, um, and a concrete mix issue that they discovered. It's called joint rot, um, ASR. Um, that, that's causing that problem there, and, and we're, our contractors now are, um, they seem to have found the, the solution is to try to avoid that at all, uh, based on the, the cement that's used in the concrete mixture.
Thank you.
Other council comments?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please, Mrs. Clerk.
I've been curious as to, is the lowest bidder, the, the, the main denominator is what it is that we choose, uh, a contractor for something like this? Um, do we not base, do we take a look at like reviews of this company, um, like, you know, grievances that have been going on? I just, as a contractor myself, I know that, um, like, going for the lowest bid is not always the greatest idea because you get what you pay for. So if you can help shed some light as to why we always go with the lowest bidder?
Well, the lowest bidder is normally the main determining factor, but we do check on other references. And then we already, the issues that we had on thirteen mile should be noted, and we can follow up on those as well. But if they don't have any major issues or major complaints about them and a reason not to go with the lowest bidder, we typically do. But we don't, if there were major complaints with them, we would not go with the lowest bidder. We're not forced to, I'm saying, go to the lowest bidder all the time. But Corey can elaborate on some of the follow-up and maybe some of the other issues that we had on thirteen mile. We did have some issues with just how they handled the project, but they were relatively minor when you're talking about the construction of the actual road.
Yeah, um, Melissa, the, the Sipperoni is a very well-known and very reputable, uh, contractor. They've been around for quite some time. Um, to get the unit prices, uh, that they, that they provided us, um, it's, 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 it's great for the city. Um, like the engineer, we, we completely agree that, uh, Sipperoni at these unit prices be a good contractor to go with.
Thank you.
Any other council comments?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just, uh, uh, just a quick comment. Uh, no, but as a matter of fact, we have gotten burned a couple of times going with low bidder, and I think over the last ten years, we've gotten a little better at that. I remember the lawn cutting services, for example, uh, we have purposely jumped over the low bidder, uh, once or twice because of service performance issue. We also had a problem on, and I don't want to name names because I'm going to get it wrong. Um, on one of the, the, the concrete contractors, and we did, when you, when you don't take the low bidder, then you're going, you have to justify that decision uh, since it's the public money that we're using, but there are valid reasons that we have utilized it on occasion, uh, both with concrete and also with other types of, of service contracts. A good point.
Any other comments? All right, um, we'll do another roll call vote through the clerk. If you support this matter, your answer is yes or aye. If you opposed, your answer is no. Will the clerk start the vote? Cheryl?
Sorry, I didn't unmute myself. Councilman Bliss?
Yes.
Um, Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Graffstein?
Yes.
Councilor Rorback?
Yes.
Councilman Saltus?
Yes.
Mayor Harwell?
I vote yes. The motion carries. Uh, the next item on our agenda is F two, uh, regarding portable toilets for city parks and events. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
Yes. In late summer of twenty nineteen, Parkway Services, the city's longtime portable toilet vendor, informed us that they would no longer be providing this service and would be removing their units from our parks at the end of the twenty nineteen park season. DPS and staff immediately published an invitation to bid for the replacement of portable toilets, which was due on August the sixteenth. However, we received no bids to that proposal. Throughout the fall and early winter months, DPS staff reached out to multiple vendors, many of whom declined to return our calls and emails, and the remainder of whom indicated that they would not be able to meet the city's needs, particularly as it pertained to the number of family-style units and the timeframes required. It was the consensus of staff that the city would be best served by rebidding this service in the spring prior to the beginning of the twenty twenty park season. On March the twelfth, staff issued a new bid, portable toilets for city parks and events. Seventy-one companies received notification of the bid, seven downloaded the bid documents, but only one returned a bid by the deadline. The bid was written in such a manner to allow bidders to furnish a variety of standard units, ADA-accessible units, and/or family bathroom units with the clear and/or family bathroom units, with the clear understanding that it was the city's eventual preference to exclusively furnish family units, with the exception of special events. This was done as a response to the understanding that the family bathroom units are not commonly stocked items for most companies. DPS and staff learned through their attempts to solicit the quotes for service. The pricing provided by Brendel's out of White Lake, Michigan, is comparable to the previous rate the city was paying for this service and proves favorable to the limited quotes staff were able to solicit through this process. Reference checks were overwhelmingly positive, and the company has indicated that they are able to fulfill all of the city's requirements as written. Based on this information, staff and I recommend that city council award the bid for portable toilets to the city's parks and events to Brendel's Septic Tank Service of White Lake, Michigan, for the unit costs identified. Funding is budgeted and available for this service. And I did verify, just to clarify, that the units that will be provided are regular units that will be ADA-accessible. This company only has one family-style restroom, but as it is available, they will rotate it, and as more come available, as they purchase more into their inventory, they will cycle those into our parks. But it's not a requirement for them to buy additional family-style restrooms.
Thank you. What's the wish of city council?
Your Honor.
Mr. Bliss.
I move that we award the bid for porta potties in our parks and special events to Brendel's Septic Tank Service of White Lake for the unit costs that were identified.
Thank you, sir. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Rorbach.
Support.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve this contract for portable toilets in our city parks and events. Is there any discussion from city council?
Your Honor, I have a question.
Yes, please.
Given the current situation with nobody at parks, I'm wondering, and the fact that we've had only one company bid on this, is this something that needs to be decided today? Is there any kind of a deadline? I'm just wondering if we should perhaps wait on this. We don't know when we are going to be allowed to use our parks again. And while I recognize the fact that, once that does happen, people are going to need to use these facilities, right now, we don't know when that is. And if there isn't a big rush to get this approved tonight, I'm, I'm just curious if there is a rush to get this approved tonight. Mr. Holmes, you would know?
Yeah, our intent, even if approved tonight, is not to have the porta potties placed until the stay-at-home order, executive order by the governor is lifted, and even then, not to put them in place until we're all comfortable with the situation, is how it is. So even if it's approved tonight, we won't put them out until this is, until everything's cleared up.
Do we, are we going to be, are we going to be bound to a contract if we approve this now? Or is this something that we can say in a month, assuming hopefully in a month this will be lifted, that we can then do the contract? My concern is, we don't know. Nobody knows.
Right.
And there's a possibility that the parks will be closed until the middle of August. They, they, they could never reopen this year. We just, we don't know. And for us to put aside money for this when we don't know, that's my question. Like, is, is this something that we can wait on? Can we approve this now with the condition that that we're not locked into a contract until the parks are open? These are my questions.
Yeah, I believe so. Melissa, correct me if I'm wrong. I, I don't think that, even if it's approved tonight, we're not bound to having these porta potties installed next week. It's, it's, our prerogative is to win when the, when the porta potties would be installed in our parks, and at that point, we'd be under contract.
I was reading in their pricing proposal to see if it actually says. First of all, it doesn't say how long their bid is good for, so typically, there is a expiration date on bids. You can't just take them in and hold them indefinitely. And there is a demand on porta johns, so that is my big concern. We had a hard time getting this one bid, so if we don't approve it, is somebody else going to get the service, and then we won't have porta johns? So that's the problem with delaying. But it doesn't say that we have to start paying them right away. It, it reads as though it's upon delivery, we'll start the time clock. So even if we didn't take delivery until July, we wouldn't be paying without having the porta johns here. It's a, but it's a per-month price.
Okay. All right. So, so we would be paying when we take delivery, and we would be taking delivery after the stay-at-home has been lifted.
Correct.
Parks are open. Okay. Then if, and if that doesn't happen.
And we can approve the contract with that particular wording as well.
Okay. All right. Do we need to change the motion in order to do that, or is that something just an administrative change you can make?
Maker, the, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sherman, please.
Maker of the motion and support should add the condition to the motion.
Is, is it necessary to add? It sounds like it's at staff's discretion when the porta potties are delivered.
It would be cleaner if we added it. This way, we're putting the, the vendor on notice that we're not, we're not going to be paying them until we order it.
Okay, then, consider my motion amended.
Support agree.
Emily.
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, let's vote. We'll do a roll call vote. If you support the motion, your answer is yes, or I. If you oppose, your answer is no. Clerk, please take the vote.
Councilwoman Clark.
Yes.
Councilman Corbett.
Yeah.
Mayor Portem Grafstein.
Yes.
Councilor Rorback.
Yes.
Councilman Soltis.
Yes.
Councilman Bliss.
Yes.
Mayor Hartwell.
I vote yes, the motion carries. The next agenda item is G1. It's ordinance 2152, proposed ordinance amendment to allow additional domestic hens. It's the first reading. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
Yes. At the request of two council members, Mayor Portem Grafstein and Councilwoman Kim Clark, legal staff drafted an amendment that would amend the current domestic hen ordinance to increase the total number of allowed domestic hens kept at a single-family residence from three to six. Currently, Chapter 5, Article 1 of Section 5-42 of the Code of Ordinance provide that a single-family residence shall be allowed to keep up to three domesticated hens. The proposed ordinance amendment changes this to permit up to six domesticated hens at a single-family residence. In addition, the proposed ordinance amendment does not change the current fee structure and requires only one license and fee per single-family residence for all domesticated hens allowed in this section. Thus, the current $20 license fee would continue to be charged on a per-household basis, and the actual increase in cost to the city would be very low, as the only increase would be issuing three additional leg bands. The license fee can be reviewed and amended by council during the budget review and approval process of cost change in the future. If council wishes to approve this ordinance, the motion would be to approve ordinance 2152 to amend the number of allowed domestic hens from three to six on first reading.
I can't believe it's been 10 years since we've debated this. What's the wish of city council?
Your Honor.
Yes, please.
I would like to make a motion to approve ordinance 2152 amendment to allow additional domestic hens, increasing the number of hens from three to six.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Grafstein. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Clerk.
I'll support.
Thank you, Mrs. Clerk. All right, it's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance 2152 on first reading. It's the proposed amendment to allow additional domestic hens. Is there discussion from city council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Soltis.
So when I saw this on here, please help me understand why we would do this now at this time, and what's the need to double the amount of chickens that somebody can raise in Madison Heights? For the life of me, I can't figure it out. I think, I think this ordinance is short-sighted. If it was up to me, I think I would put it down to zero, considering the, the situation that's going on, the pandemic, and I'm not necessarily equating the two, but there is evidence, you know, all you have to do is go to the CDC website, and they talk about poultry-raising chickens in, in this type of environment has certain costs, and there are certain dangers inherent in that. I mean, I, you know, all you have to do is look at the influenza A virus and the other ones that pop up and they mutate. I, I mean, I, please, for the one who made, the councilwoman who made the motion, please explain to me why, why the need to raise it to six?
Absolutely. I'd be happy to. So, as Mr. Hartwell said, about 10 years ago, this came before council. Mr. Hartwell, Mr. Corbett, Mr. Sherman, I think that is it for the members who are with us now. This started because someone was caught having chickens illegally in the city, someone who wanted to raise chickens for food, for eggs. And there was a long proposal that was sent to everyone I just mentioned. I don't know if they still have it. I'm happy to furnish that again for current council. But it outlined, and it would be dated because it was 10 years ago, it outlined the benefits to the economy and to the environment, and to the food stability and sustainability of having backyard chickens. All right. The reason that it's being requested to increase is because 100 years ago, when people did raise their own food, the US government suggested that it should be two hens per person in the household. So if you take a standard household of two or three, or of three or four people, you're going to be looking at six to eight hens. And council decided 10 years ago to go with three. Chickens are social animals, so you don't want just one. You need to have more than one. They lay, on average, 250 eggs a year. They don't lay one every day. And right now, there are a lot of people in the city who want to look at food sources that are not from the big-box stores. They want to look at gardening. They want to look at urban gardening. This has been something that's been talked about a lot. A lot of cities around us allow hens. Ferndale had three. Prior to this, they increased it to six. There are a lot of things that are going on with that, and I could spend the entire night talking to you about the benefits of backyard chickens, but I'm guessing you don't want to hear that. However, if you do, they don't produce the same waste that dogs do. They produce less. That can all be composted. They are living composters like worms, but they actually digest their food and poop it out or turn it into an egg within 24 hours. So people who want to have gardens often add hens. As for influenza, I can't comment on that. I know a lot of people who have backyard chickens, and none of the people that I know have dealt with that. I don't know what other questions you have, but please, I'm happy to answer them.
Oh, that, Your Honor.
Yeah, please.
No, you answered it, and you pretty much surmised what I thought. So for me, this is a public health issue. And from a public health issue, I, I think this would be short-sighted and not prudent to the potential harm that could be done. Now, I'm, you know, I don't want to be raising the alarms and stuff, but, you know, look at today in society. I think all the, the benefits that you mentioned can be done without. We have, some of the homes in, like in Rochester, they have this chicken ordinance, and they're, but their homes are not close together, like here in Madison Heights. I, I think the, the negative outweighs the positive, any positive that could come about. You know, because look at, I took some sats down, and, and they had, in 2015, these chicken farmers. Now, these are chicken farmers, but nonetheless, the, the point about, in terms of a public health issue, is they can transfer over to domestic chickens. They had to kill 50 million chickens and turkeys in 2015 because of the influenza-type virus. Now, imagine if that just somehow came across these other residential chickens. That's my point, is that that potential's there, and I, I think this is a huge mistake if we, if we do it. I, I just, just because Ferndale did it and some of the other cities, you know, I, I, I I just think we need to be more prudent and insightful, especially what's going on in the entire world right now with this pandemic. Now, I'm not saying that somebody's chicken in their backyard is going to turn into a pandemic, but, you know, you got these, you got these wet markets that are still operating, and they're trying to focus that, that what is currently happening now came from there. So how do we know that the ones that own these chickens are going to take care of them properly? Who's going to regulate it? How do we know that they're regulating it? And I heard just the other day that we had somebody that got caught with five chickens or something. They were supposed to have only two, and then they have five or six. I think that was the same one that had the meth lab. So I, you know, I, I just, I just think, now, I'm not saying there's equating the two, but what I'm saying is that they found this, and they found other stuff. So how do you know that people are going to have more than they're doing in disobedient way in terms of how many they, they handle?
So sorry, I, I, my Zoom turned off, so I missed the first part of what you said. I will make a comment about what you were saying about five chickens at the meth lab. Yes, I have heard that people who run meth labs actually do keep chickens, and the reason for that is that if the chickens start to die, it's because there's too many chemicals in the house. So those are not the people that I'm suggesting would be necessarily getting the chickens. Those probably didn't have licensed chickens. I'm talking about the people who want to keep them as pets, and the people who want to raise them for eggs, and the people who want to raise them in addition to their garden. As a side note, the woman who started, who started this 10 years ago, her hen just died in the last month or so. So they can live for a long time as pets as well. But I'm sorry, I missed what you said because Zoom turned off, so I missed like two or three minutes.
All right. So, yeah, Mr. Corbett and I were around in 10 years ago. And it was, it was a complicated debate for us to get this approved, and then we did a two-year trial period, where after the end of two years, we examined, you know, the police logs, the code enforcement logs, and the public health issues. And we found out that all of our concerns didn't come to pass. And I remember the debate over the quantity, David, and and city attorney Larry Sherman, he probably remembers this discussion. The number could have been any number, and honestly, we probably would have just picked a number out of the air, 6, 10, it didn't matter. But we, we arrived at three because, just a matter of convenience and symmetry, that we allow three dogs or three cats in a household. And we thought that, you know, a domestic hen is, you know, maybe it's different than a caged animal or a caged bird that you'd have in your house because it is outdoors, and so we were equating them with dogs and cats that could potentially go outside. But that, that was an interesting debate. I don't think we really, like, were 100% satisfied on that number, but there was, there was a push for more, but we just for, like I said, symmetry, three was the number we put on paper.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mrs. Clerk.
Do we, I have a couple of questions. Do we, one, know how many licensed hens there are in the city currently? And, two, have there been any public health concerns that have raised from, since when you guys started allowing chickens? Or hens, sorry.
Mayor.
Yes, please.
We currently have three households with three chickens, three domestic hens each that we know of. As Roslin and Dave both mentioned, we did find a house that had more than three chickens, and they were not licensed at the city. So there could be others that we don't know about, but we know of three. So there could be others that we don't know about, but we know of three with three hens each.
And do we get a lot of complaints about chickens in the city?
Not to my knowledge. I would ask Cheryl if she's gotten any through animal licensing.
Not that I'm aware of right now, currently.
You know, I, I remember the, you know, we talked about disease, you know, 10 years ago and then eight years ago, we talked about the concerns of disease. We talked about would uh, the hens drive the neighborhood dogs crazy. The dogs would be barking at the hens all night long. But I, I think the real issue is, you know, we're, we're always worried about animal cruelty. And we're also worried about, you know, really messy negligent owners. Um, and our ordinance still protects against that. You know, we still don't allow ground feeding and that has to do, I mean, I guess that could be closely related to public health because ground feeding would attract the rats. But uh, yeah, I guess I would leave it to the clerk or animal control if they had a report on how many cases. Yeah, Mr. Corbett, please.
Yeah, actually to, to the question that was raised earlier, um, and as I've said a couple of times, uh, we had 10 years ago, we had a major kerfuffle over chickens. And, but the, two interesting things about that, it immediately died off. I, I mean, Ms. Grassian, I can't argue with your, with your points about sustainability and stuff. It's just, it doesn't appear that my constituents, our constituents are terribly interested. We have three licensed households in this community and the one with the meth lab, I suspect that the least of their problems is going to be getting a civil ticket for too many chickens. I, I, I don't, yeah, it's fine. I don't have any problem with that. My, my suspicion is that the reason interest in raising chickens died off. It's a little bit like getting a pet. It's a great idea until you actually got to do it. Uh, and it's a bit of a hassle. You better be seriously into the whole um, sustainability thing. Otherwise it's going to be more of a pain in the neck than what it's worth. I just, to be honest with you, I just, I don't think there's any call for it. And I'll be honest with you, in the seven or eight years since we dealt with that, I don't believe I've had one person, now one person, ask me about chickens, you know, increasing the number. Uh, maybe I have had in the course of my line of work, I have had some people asking if Madison Heights was friendly to accepting these animals. But I don't ever recall anybody doing it. So I guess to be honest with you, I got no problem with the proposal tonight, but it really does look like a solution for a problem. I don't see, uh, I don't see any overwhelming interest in raising the number, but I also don't see any reason to not go along with it. Okay, whatever. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, we're, we're talking about like 0.1% of our population possess domestic hens. It's not a pressing, you know, we have a thousand important things to worry about. This is numbered a million and one. But to me, three or six, I don't care. I allow, we allow hens. If the owner can responsibly handle six, then I'm fine with that. Um, you know, there was a fear, a slippery slope argument that here it comes. So maybe we'll get a call like, I told you guys, you would, you would grow the flock. But the fear was, I think from some of our, like, some of our ancestors who uh, remember the times where Madison Heights and Warren were like hog farms and horse ranches, uh, and that there was a fear that we'd, we'd go back to commercial farming. That hasn't happened. And then uh, may he rest in peace, Ken Fleet was proposing goats. We haven't got there. So I don't think we've crossed the line where we're harming the public, so I I'll support six, but I, okay, that's fine. It's not newsworthy. I think it's just an internal matter. And the 0.01% of our residents that care, uh, they'll get a, they'll get an early Christmas present. Any other council comments?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Soltes, thank you.
No, I, I defer to Councilman Bliss.
Oh, thank you. Uh, Your Honor, um, one thing that I'd like to get an understanding of, I know we're talking about a fraction of a percentage of our residents, but was this important to each of those three households with three licenses? Did they request additional, additional hen licenses? Does, I, I did, I, did they do that to the clerk?
Your Honor? I have not received any requests for increases.
Mrs. Clark?
I know.
I heard Mrs. Clark first.
Yes, um, when I initially brought it up as something on the agenda, it was because there's a, there's a group on Facebook now, Victory Gardens. There's close to 800 people, uh, 800 members of this group now. And they are all planning succession gardens throughout the city to grow vegetables during this crisis so that they can have food. I am actually uh, someone who is in need of that resources, being that my business has been closed due to the virus and I can't make money. And I'm going to be running out of money for food soon, so my family is looking for other opportunities to make sure that we have food. So gardening and chickens, and there are a, a number of residents on this group who, who also talked about wanting to have more chickens as well. So I didn't receive any like personal, hey, we should have six chickens. But when I got to talking with uh, Rosalyn about it, because she was, she remembered the original time that it came about. She thought that originally there should have been more chickens to begin with. And so I
Okay, uh, Mrs. Grassian, you had some more comments?
I don't know if they are, I'm assuming they're licensed. Uh, I was talking to someone, I've talked to someone a couple of times. Someone has contacted me just um, in, not via email or anything, but just in conversation, who said that they have the three and they would like to have more. As well, I came up with the number six. I had a conversation with someone who has had backyard chickens for several years. And um, they said that six would be a good number for the size of our lots. You know, we could do more, but it's also the kind of thing where if you're starting and you don't know what you're doing to bring on 10 or 20 chickens is a lot. So um, to start with three or six is, is a good start. So and our lots are definitely big enough to do that. I can say that um, I, I went to a house in Royal Oak. And they have a very small lot. Uh, next, the, pretty much the only grass in their yard is next, just a strip next to their, uh, their garage. And I went there to buy eggs. And um, they had nine chickens and a turkey. So, and, and a very, very small parcel. So I don't think that it's the intent of anyone that, that I have talked to who is interested in this to suddenly become a chicken farmer and to um, have chickens running all over and going rampant. But um, this is something that can help people, as you know, as Mrs. Clark said, you know, it's, it's a food source. And um, people who properly take care of their chickens are not going to attract rodents. They're not going to be a nuisance. But they're also not going to be running a meth house.
Your Honor?
Yeah, Mr. Soltes.
I just, I just want to make, make one more comment um, before I'm done, because I, to me, this is just a public health issue. And, and I've been in healthcare for a long time and all about healthcare and public health is about mitigating risk. And to me, it may sound uh, like a hyperbole to everyone else, but um, again, from a public health standpoint, I, I think it's important and that's why I'm saying what I'm saying, because there's facts, right? Facts is the influenza resides in poultry as well as other animals or ducks um, and turkeys. In fact, number two, it can be transferred to humans. And so when I look at those two facts, um, whether it didn't happen in the last 10 years is not the issue. The virus dictates the time and frame uh, when it strikes. And so 10 years, it may not in 10 years, it might be not in the next 10 years, but down the road, um, I, I, that's why I was just talking about mitigating the risk. So I, you know, I, I understand that people want to be more self-sustaining and I applaud a plant-based diet that I'm currently on as well. So you know, I, I agree with that. Uh, but again, I, I just want to be on record saying that um, I just think it's a mistake.
Okay, I think we've heard all the arguments.
Your Honor, just if I may, I wasn't finished earlier. If I could have a couple more minutes?
Okay.
Thank you. Um, so I'm, I'm generally not opposed to it. Um, this hits close to home with me. My neighbor for a while had a few chickens. Uh, didn't upset my dog, didn't upset my kids. Uh, and the city has been managing it. I think, I, I mean, I understand the, the concerns. Councilman Soltes, you raise a lot of valid points that I think the city staff needs to take into account as we continue to manage this. I don't know if three or six or, you know, what the appropriate number of hens in our households are. I know pasture-raised hens, I think the recommended is like 108 square feet or something per pasture-raised hen of actual yard space. So not cement, but actual yard space. So I, I do think that that warrants looking into, I, I, I know uh, Mayor Potem Grassian had mentioned the size of our lots being sufficient for these chickens. Maybe between first and second reading, we can get an understanding of how that factors into it. But for me, it's about, it's about freedom to do it. We just adopted uh, the ability for mimosas to be served at a restaurant up until two o'clock. Uh, we're not forcing residents to partake in that. Uh, I know one council member who's definitely not going to partake in that. But I, I, I think giving people the option, if this is a fraction of a percent for the people that are wanting to partake, it seems like it means a lot to them. Uh, but I would like us to, to A, look into the square footage per hen. Are there any best practices that we just don't know of? Maybe the number seven, maybe it's four. I, I don't know. The, the number three was arbitrary, but if we're going to revisit this, we should probably do our due diligence. And then the second thing, uh, I think understanding from those who have the three licenses, if we could reach out to each, each of those households and get an understanding of how many that they'd like, is it four, is it seven, 10? I, I, I don't know what it is, but uh, if we're going to do this, I'd, I'd love for us to get a little bit more facts and, and do our due diligence before we get into second reading. Uh, it's important to some residents and so it, uh, you know, I, I think we owe it to them to, to take it up. But I don't want to have to revisit this again in, you know, however many years because we got it wrong.
All right, there will be plenty more time to debate at the next city council meeting. Um, so this is only the first reading. There will still be a second reading of council wishes. I think we've heard enough argument, so we're going to vote. As before, we'll do a roll call vote. If you support this ordinance amendment, your answer is yes or I. If you oppose it, your answer is no. Will the clerk please begin the vote?
Councilman Corbett?
Yeah.
Mayor Potem Grassian?
Yes.
Councilor Robach?
Yes.
Councilman Soltes?
No.
Councilman Bliss?
Yes.
Councilman, Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Mayor Hartwell?
I vote yes. Uh, the motion carries. All right, we can jump to minutes. Uh, what's the wish of city council regarding the regular city council meeting minutes? 323 2020.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I moved that the council approved the minutes as printed of March 23rd.
Thank you, sir. Is there support?
Your Honor?
Yes, Mr. Soltes?
Support.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to adopt the minutes of 323 20 as printed. Is there any discussion? I was gonna, I was gonna do the vote myself. We have to do another uh, roll call vote. If you support the motion, your answer is yes or I. If you oppose, the answer is no. Will the clerk please take the vote?
Mayor Potem Grassian?
Yes.
Councilor Robach?
Yes.
Councilman Soltes?
Yes.
Councilman Bliss?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Corbett?
Sure, why not?
Mayor Hartwell?
I vote yes. The motion carries. All right, I don't, I don't believe there's any other business before city council tonight. Um, no action was taken on item A1. And we do not have an executive session planned. So before we adjourn, I'd invite any closing comments from members of staff and city council and uh, we'll go in the typical order. And so we'll begin with Mr. Corbett, if you'd like.
Just a, a couple of very quick items. First of all, Mr. Bliss, I am persuadable on the mimosa question, which is something socially unacceptable about single malt scotch at 11:30 in the morning. I'm not sure why. It seems unfair to me, but but I'm sure you can help me with that. On the question of the 27795 John R property, I wanted to, I, normally I think, and I, I believe people deserve a vote and a hearing on their matters. My concern with this issue is that it was, it could be controversial. And I think that there are people who are not the internet, not the Facebook, not the, the sort of people who deserve to be present uh, and learn about these things in what used to be our typical ways. So I would be, that's a, that's a long way to either maybe the next meeting or the meeting after, I would be open to putting that back on the agenda if the business owner is still uh, amenable. If we're able to uh, to give them a hearing in a, what was a normal setting for us, where, where the neighborhood people could circulate the word, come up to city hall and make their comments. If you examine the, the record of the prior hearing on this some years ago, I guess it was 11 years or so ago. There were, I think, seven, eight, nine people who were in attendance. So I suspect you will get, because it, it hits, it hits all the points. You know, it's, it's a DDA question, it's a neighborhood question. Uh, so I'd want it to be available for people to access. One other item over the course of the week, we've been talking with the manager over budget issues and how to deal with the long and the short term questions that we're going to be faced with. One item I true to want to get on the record, it's my understanding, based on my conversations with Ms. Marsh, her understanding, my understanding is approximately the same. Short-term financing does normally fall within the purview of the manager. Where I'm going with that is I am very concerned with come August that we're going to start to see some late tax payments for reasons that are obvious to everybody on this call. Where I'm going with that is we still have payrolls that are going to have to be met in October, November, December. Vendors who are going to have to be compensated. Uh, and so I just want to acknowledge publicly that the council and, and my belief and if we, and if the attorney's office decides later on, we need to have a resolution to, to endorse it. But I believe the manager should be empowered to obtain short-term financing and meet the needs of the community over the next few months. By the time we get to next spring, the treasurer's office will be compensating the community for any late payments on the taxes that weren't made from the summer bill. So our, our, our income will level out at some point. But uh, but I think, I think the council needs to know that is one of the many dozens of issues that we're going to have to be taking up over the next few months. I just, I kind of wanted to get it on the record that the, I was thinking about, I know the manager was just thinking about it. And uh, and that's something we may need to, we may need to recognize as proof, but on the line. That's all I have to say. And I hope everyone is well and continues to say that way.
Thank you. Uh, next would be Mr. Bliss.
Yes, Your Honor. Uh, I'm, I'm actually feeling really thankful today. Uh, I did my own uh, quarantine haircut. Don't look too close, but I don't think it was too bad. Uh, also finally able to buy toilet paper online, so that was a huge phenomenal win. Mostly though, I'm, I'm thankful for the amazing work of those in our city, our staff, our volunteers, our school districts, for all of the hard work that they've been doing. Uh, the Madison district, uh, they handed up full Easter dinners and they continue to do their breakfast and lunch uh, for any needing uh, family that is driving up. Landfair uh, is providing their weekly food packages and my children's own principal, uh, shout out to uh, Amy Gazinski, who was riding her bike around the city, drawing hearts at all of the students' home, in, including one on my sidewalk that my kids really, really loved and appreciated. Uh, and, and also all of the hardworking residents uh, and the donors who are doing such a phenomenal job at the emergency food pantry. Uh, our staff, our first responders and all, all of the residents on the front line that are, are keeping us safe and allowing the world to go on and providing beneficial services to, you know, high-risk families like my own who are a little bit more secluded than most, uh, you know, hence the quarantine haircut. Um, and, and so it's, it's really, it's really great to see the community coming together all across the board. Uh, when we're talking about our staff and our school districts and the volunteers at the food pantry and all of the, the healthcare, grocery, food service, delivery workers, everybody that's providing such an incredible boost to our city at this time. Uh, I would love when, whenever we get out of this, and we will, but whenever we get out of this, I'd like us to do a proclamation and a specific day in recognition of all of those who fought so hard and provided such an impact to us during this time. Invite as many, as many as we can to get out and do some sort of, uh, uh, I don't know, maybe a wall with their names on it or something, whatever we can do. Um, you know, you're seeing a lot of people that have done such a great job for our community and I'd love to be able to uh, recognize them and highlight their hard work.
Okay, sir. Uh, thank you very much. Uh, Mrs. Rorback? Emily, unmute yourself.
Hi, does that work now? Okay. Um, I'm going to start with the lyrics from Leonard Cohen's Anthem. It's something that's been going through my head a lot lately, which is, um, it goes ring the bells that still can ring. Forget your perfect offering. There is a crack, a crack in everything. That's how the light gets in. And there's a reason I, I think I'm thinking about these lyrics because these are really scary times for a lot of people. There's a lot of fear, a lot of sickness, and there's even death here in our community. This disease and everything we're doing to combat it, um, is causing cracks in our lives. It's cracks caused by death, cracks caused by lost jobs, cracks caused by loss of security, loss of school times, routines, family time, holiday celebrations, the list goes on and on and on. And my hope is that we see light in the cracks in our lives and we celebrate the people who are stepping up and stepping in and keeping us all going. Like Councilwoman Bliss noted, there are doctors and nurses, but the environmental staff at hospitals and, and, and every healthcare worker. Uh, there's police officers and firefighters and the EMS and our own city manager and the teachers and food service workers and the delivery people and the grocery store staff and every essential worker who's out there every day keeping us all going. I just want to say thank you. In Madison Heights, I want to, um, you know, think and, and look at the work of the volunteers who have stepped up to lead the efforts of the Madison Heights Emergency Pantry. Um, Amanda Stein and Cheryl Murray. Those are just two of the women, but there are so many more that are doing so much work there. They're picking up donations and delivering them to those in need. To the volunteers who are teaching and encouraging people to grow their own gardens, um, Eve Sandoval and, and so many others. Um, to the teachers and administrators at Madison District and Lampier Schools and the other schools in our city that are serving children and families here. I want to thank all of you and I want to thank the parents who are trying to work from home while also parenting and facilitating school for their children. I'm with you. I thank you for doing your part in all of this. And this is really the hardest part for me because I wanted to tell the Pickering family that I'm very sorry for your loss. Gordy, um, was a son of a former councilman here in Madison Heights and he passed away um, just last week. And, uh, he was a former former, um, neighbor of mine. And he, he always told me how he would pass out his father's flyers, um, when he was running for council and he was one of those guys that we did not agree on a lot of things, but he was one of the best neighbors I could ever imagine. He gave his time to his friends and to neighbors. He always had time for a laugh and he helped people whenever they needed it. And our community is poor because of his loss. So I just want to send my love to that family and to everybody who loved him and just to say to everybody, stay strong, stay safe and please just stay home. Thank you.
Okay, uh, next, uh, the city attorney, Mr. Sherman, uh, do you have any closing comments?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I hope everyone had as nice a holiday weekend as they could, given the circumstances we are all experiencing. And just like, um, Counselor Rorback, I had a very sad week, uh, this past week. I lost two very close friends. And, um, one was COVID related and the other one was probably COVID assisted. And, um, we did something for one of the friends who happened to be a renowned radiation oncologist, not just in, in this area, not just in the state of Michigan, but in the entire country and also internationally. That since we couldn't attend the funeral, uh, the friends arranged cars to meet at a high school parking lot so that the family, when they came home from the service would know that that they weren't alone and that we were all there for them. So it's been very difficult. I hope we do have some, some light in the cracks of our lives. I'm hoping, I'm hoping that if the health component, if we can get past the health component, everything else will fall into place for all of us and our loved ones. And I would certainly be a hundred percent on board with honoring our, our essential employees who are risking their lives to save ours day in and day out during the pandemic. So my wish for everyone is just to stay well. Thank you.
Our assistant city attorney, Nick Krasowski, is here. Nick, are you still on? Any comments?
He's not on the call anymore.
Oh, okay. All right, uh, city manager, Mrs. Marsh, any closing comments?
Um, yes, I have a couple. Um, I would echo the comments of the other council members. I'm very thankful for the volunteers. Found them to be very motivating. This is definitely a situation that can, uh, it's changing so fluid, it pretty much keeps you beat down, but I see the good work that's being done throughout the community and it's extremely motivating. So thank you to all of them. And I also want to thank all of the city staff, not just police and fire, although they're doing an amazing job, but the staff in all of the departments. Um, and last, um, for those of you who may have seen on Facebook last week, uh, was asked to participate in a press conference with Andy Levin and it's the Corona Community Stimulus Act that he is proposing. And this is money that will be funneled down to small local governments like Madison Heights. Um, there was about a hundred and fifty billion dollars that had been pushed out to local governments of a half a million doll, a half a million population and more, and that excluded most of the local municipalities throughout the country. So this act would be direct stimulus for cities such as Madison Heights for lost revenue during this time. And that is something that we are definitely going to need, um, going forward. And I would just ask anybody listening or council members to offer support, to thank Andy Levin for pushing this through. He has helped throughout the country. There are representatives from New Mexico and New Jersey helping him sponsor that bill. So I would just ask that everyone reach out with support through emails or phone calls, however you can do that. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we'll go to our clerk, Mrs. Rotman.
Uh, no comments tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Portem Gravstein, any comments?
I want to echo what everybody has said. Um, just thanking everyone, the, the staff, the emergency services, Mrs. Marsh, all the volunteers, I mean, all the medical staff. It's, it's amazing what you think of as essential and when it comes down to it, what really is essential. Um, all the grocery workers, the mail carriers, the Amazon delivery, you know, everybody out there, the, the street cleaners, the garbage men, everyone who was out there doing their part to keep us safe and healthy and fed. Um, you know, our, our ancestors lived through so much worse than us, you know, they, they lived through wars, they lived through other types of famines and we're being asked for the most part to stay home. We're being asked, if you're going to go get groceries, do it once a week, wait a couple of days before you get your chocolate milk or whatever it may be. And, and we are so privileged to be able to do that. And huge shout out to the emergency pantry and all the volunteers. That group has brought so many people together and they did it, it just, it was an overnight. They did it in, in such a short period of time. And, um, you know, I'm going to echo some of the same names. Eve Sandoval has been all over. She's been part of that. She's been doing cheerful chalk. She goes out and she just draws these drawings, you know, murals on, on the sidewalk, bringing joy to people. Um, you know, Amanda Stein, Cheryl Murray, Brian Massacre, Michael Abbott, they're just out there doing these things. They're, they're picking up, they're, they're delivering, they're taking food to, uh, the elderly, the immunocompromised. Um, and they're doing an awesome job and the people who are donating, you know, they're helping as well. And it, it's so unfortunate and sad that we need this, but it's so wonderful that everyone is coming together. Um, I sat in on the call that, uh, Mrs. Marsh had with Congressman Levin. Um, and the mayor of Claussen was on and she said something that of course, you know, I knew and I think we all knew, but just hearing it, she said, there's not going to be their Fourth of July parade. And, and of course there isn't, but just hearing that, that's something that my family always goes to Claussen for their Fourth of July, just like we always do our Memorial Day parade here and we do all our festival in the park and just all these things that we just, we take for granted. And, you know, they're not in April, so I haven't crossed them off my calendar yet, but I'm like, wow, these are things that these impact us. These are things that the community gets together and does, and we're not going to be able to because one is the safety, another is going to be the financial. So just everyone who's out there and who's thinking, um, for do, you know, what they can do for us. And if you have an idea on what you can do to help, talk to somebody about it and contact me. I've had people contact me with other ideas that they have, you know, I'm happy to work with you to see if we can make it work. Contact other members of council, the, the pantry like that. They, they set that up, you know, our police are now doing the drive-by birthdays. I contacted Mrs. Marsh and I said, oh, I'm seeing fires, you know, fire staff are doing this in other cities. Can we do this? And she said, we can't do it with our fire, but we can do it with our police. It's such a little thing, but it means so much these days. So I want to say thank you to everybody who was out there. People are making masks. There's just so many things that people are doing. Um, and share your ideas, but do it at a distance, stay safe and stay home. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mrs. Clark, any closing comments?
Hi, yeah, I'll make it quick because I keep popping in and out of service and the sound is terrible. But I, I just wanted to obviously echo everyone's statements. I wanted to mention how grateful I am for Governor Whitmer and uh, sticking to the stay-at-home order today with her last statement um, and making sure that the, the decline that we are currently now in stays on the decline and doesn't come back up anytime soon. Um, as a small business owner in the city of Madison Heights, this is hurting us greatly, but nothing would hurt me more than if this disease reached my mother who is suffering from COPD at home and I had to worry about losing her to that. So I'm very grateful for the stay-at-home order and I hope that it holds in place as long as it needs to. Um, I'm also very grateful for Alyssa Marsh, who is having to deal with yet another giant economic crisis before we were even finished with the first one. I can't imagine how hard and difficult her job is on a day-to-day basis. But we couldn't be more lucky to have such a pro, um, on our team. She's amazing. I support every decision she's ever made. I'm really proud to have her here and I can't imagine how hard her job is now. So if anyone wants to send her chocolates or flowers or, or anything safe to promote social distancing, give her some love because she definitely needs it. Um, uh, for the emergency pantry, uh, we have dozens of volunteers now. Um, we have, um, a handful of leads that are really responsible for a lot of, um, what gets, uh, done for the pantry. And I know that they've served close to, or they've served over twelve hundred people since they started four weeks ago. Um, and they were able to get out a hundred and fifty Easter baskets, uh, on Easter, which was amazing. We've received donations from big box stores. We've received donations from residents. We've received cash donations. Um, people who order from our Amazon pantry lists. It's just amazing. But, uh, today, one of our leaders announced that she would be stepping down to, um, to start a new job, which we're sad that she has to do that. We're excited for her. She has a new job. But she left us with these, uh, closing comments, which I thought were pretty inspiring. So I'll just read that. "These are tumultuous and scary and stressful times. Every one of us has chosen to step up and help instead of falling to pieces and we should all be proud of ourselves for that. You all got a spot on my personal apocalypse team. But remember that people in crisis aren't always at their best and being as forgiving as others as you want them to be with you. Be generous with your thanks and appreciation towards each other and our volunteers. Leaders by example, not by mandate." That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Saltus, any closing comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for everybody to stay safe and stay home. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for your thoughtful comments, everyone. I don't like sitting in this cold, lonely city hall. Um, so I can't wait for the day that our team is back together. You know, I was making wellness calls to our senior citizens and there were so many voices that are just discouraged. Uh, there's so much anxiety in our city right now. And it's okay to express those feelings, the good, the bad, the stress. Uh, but as city leaders, I think tonight was important, um, for us to promote messages of hope, of healing, of resources and connections. And don't get me wrong, I mean, the city's message is honest in the face of this growing virus. Um, but as leaders, we're not wallowing in self pity. We're not glowing in media fame or using fear tactics. We're just promoting health and transparency because we're the most trusted institution um, in all levels of government. Um, so I really want to appreciate city council for demonstrating calm, resolve and best practices as we support our employees. Now, as of this evening, um, there are a hundred and twenty-one known cases and fourteen Madison Heights residents have died of COVID-19 and more are likely to get sick as the virus continues to spread. Um, but we have to honor those people who have lost their lives and we deeply grieve for our families and neighbors and friends and anyone from the city of Madison Heights or any of our neighboring communities. The city of Madison Heights was one of the first in the state of Michigan to declare a state of emergency, which I honestly feel helped slow the spread of coronavirus in our community. But actually, probably the best story is we're seeing heroes rise to this occasion. Our police officers, they continue to come to work and protect us despite the shock of many of their own police officers falling ill to COVID-19. Our firefighters who visit homes every day to save our residents from heart attacks or strokes or broken bones or even from this disease. And the clerks in city hall and other city departments who come to city to keep the lights on, to keep government operating. And we can't forget the strong men and women who work in our Department of Public Services who come to work to protect our water supply and keep the roads safe for passage of emergency and essential vehicles. Um, and we're also touched by the stories coming from the private sector who will see amazing economic devastation. And we hear stories of individuals who still work at grocery stores or pharmacies and delivery services, our letter carriers who continue to work to deliver goods essential to our survival. Madison Heights, the city of progress is a blue collar town. Uh, not just because of all the factory workers who've been idled, sitting at home, but we earn that title of a hard-working city because of the scores and scores of healthcare professionals, especially nurses and hospital workers who are exposed daily to scenes that would frighten many of us. And we need to thank them, we need to thank the workers who protect us and deliver essential goods and services. And it doesn't get cliche, it doesn't get old, it's what we have to do. It demonstrates our humanity, demonstrates why Madison Heights is a great place to live in. So I know it's frustrating to stay at home, but we have great leaders in city hall, in the city council, in Oakland County, in the state of Michigan. Please stay at home, please stay safe, and please be kind to yourself and the people around you. Good night, I don't believe there's any other business for the city council meeting, so I adjourn this meeting. Good night, everyone.